Our district YouTube channel on the district website. The meeting is now called to order. It is February 19th, 2025, and the time is 6:32 PM. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Heather's not here, so Zach, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for stepping in and doing that. And then can you call roll?
Again, Scott Andreessen.
Here.
Natalie Copeland.
Here.
Zach Doralt is here. Diana Fenton.
Here.
Shannon Hoz.
Here.
And the following board members are not present, which would just include Heather Weems. And the following cabinet members and staff are present at the District Administration Office. Superintendent Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Jason Harris, Assistant Superintendent of E-12 Educational Services, Shannon Avinson, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Scalrude, Executive Director of Operations, Joel Heidkamp, Executive Director of Research, Enrollment and Assessments, Don Roper, Executive Director of Special Projects, Gary Gange, Media Technicians, Paul Novak and Gordy Scott, and the custodian on site is Austin Goodwater. I think I got everybody who's present. Okay.
Thank you. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's Board of Education meeting agenda.
So move.
I have a motion by Scott, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call vote on that?
Shannon Hoz.
Yes.
Diane Fenton.
Yes.
Zach Doralt, yes. Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Thank you. Then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items the board adopts routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. Up on the consent agenda, Item A, approval of minutes from January 6th, 2025, January 8th, 2025, and January 22nd, 2025. Item B, approval of bills and other financial transactions. Oh, now I'm in trouble. In the grand total amount of, oh, I got it on this one, $2,198,685.55. Item C, approval of personnel staff changes. Item D, acceptance and grant awards and donations. Item E, bid award, North Junior High LTFM improvements. Item F, bid award, South Junior High LTMF improvements. Item G, proposed revised board policy 522 Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination Policy and Grievance Procedure Change in Law. I have one, we have Item D being polled for, by Natalie. She's going to recuse herself. And then Scott, am I polling?
Yeah.
E and F?
F.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Item A, B, C, and G?
Second.
I have a motion by Natalie, a second by Scott. Zach, can you call vote for those items?
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Zach Doralt, CS. Diana Fenton.
Yes.
Shannon Hoz.
Yes. And then can I get a, Natalie's, for Item D, Natalie's going to recuse herself. Can I get a motion to approve Item D?
So move.
And, thank you. Motion by Scott and a second by Diana. And so Zach, can you call vote on that one?
Diana Fenton.
Yes.
Zach Doralt, yes. Natalie Copeland?
Recused.
Oh, sorry. Scott and, Scott Andreessen, Shannon Hoz.
Yes. Okay. And then let's, last two items, E and F. Scott, you polled those questions?
Yes, so we didn't have a finance meeting, so I'd like to know what these are about.
Yep, so this is our summer LTFM projects at North and South. So the majority of it is converting existing restrooms to single-user restrooms, replacing the movable wall in the gym, panel board replacement and window replacement, which is only at North. The rest of those are at both. So all of the items are aligned with that LTFM plan that the board would have approved last July.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Can I then get a motion to approve Items E and F?
So move.
I have a motion by Scott, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call vote on that?
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Zach Doralt, yes. Diana Fenton.
Yes.
Shannon Hoz.
Yes.
Scott Andreessen.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to information items, we have the ClearView School presentation presented tonight by Principal Anne, help me out here, Gerbets. I like that one. Welcome, God, to have you. Appreciate you coming out in the cold and joining us here.
It's nice to be here. Thank you. Well, Board Chair Hawes, Board members, Dr. Putnam, and other administrative leaders, it's a real pleasure for me to be here. I'm kind of humbled and honored to represent ClearView Elementary. You'll see here, we are one community and two programs. We're dual-language immersion in Spanish and English. And we're, our focus or our commitment is a safe and caring environment that is emphasizing positive behavior intervention supports, academic excellence, and inclusion in an immersion setting. So you'll see that we had Kindness Week last week. The kids got to dress up for each day. The first day they defined what kindness was, and then they thought of ways to be kind to themselves, kind to their friends, kind to their families, and then kindness to their community. We also have very much enjoyed launching the One District One Book Initiative with the robots. Our kids actually dressed the books up in boxes that were robots. They dressed up as robots. And we had a door decorating competition for the book as well, The Wild Robot Escapes. And we launched our book Bingo Family Event to coincide with the district launch of the book, so that we kind of focused on that as well with the family. So it's a new beginning for me in St. Cloud and with ClearView, and so that means really building new relationships. That's been my focus this year with all of the different teachers. Our theme is poco a poco, un poquito, un cit convierto, and mucho. It's little by little, a little becomes a lot. So trust really comes through relationship building, and that creates safety. And then we have to think about our priorities, because when everything's a priority, nothing is, and then you get piecemeal initiatives. So our goal really this year was to maintain a lot of the initiatives we were doing and to expand those as best we can for the kids and the families. I wanted to honor strengths and learn what was going well. I got a credit, a big shout out to Meredith Boucher, who's now at Madison. She really helped me a lot in being onboarded, both in the district and into ClearView. My instructional leadership team has really been pretty amazing in collaborating on our strategic initiative plan, our continuous improvement plan. And then other district leaders, like Nikki Hansen and Laura Stebner, have been very, very helpful, along with the grade-level academic leads. And what else has been going very, very well are the community connections. Our PTA is very supportive of our staff and our teachers. We have a great Veterans Day program that we're connected with the community, St. John's Outdoor University, and we're looking forward to a new phase in the Forest Project that we're planning for the spring, as far as the plan, and then implementing in the fall when the kids return to school. So that's pretty exciting. So I'm going to go ahead and let the people of the school speak on behalf of ClearView overall. And I'll just get that video running. I start with the, we start with the, a day in the life of ClearView with announcements, and then we finish up that way, too, so. We're going to move on to the ClearView pledge and then the mindful breathing. So I am going to turn it over again to Winward.
Today, I pledge to be kind, responsible, and safe. I pledge to be kind to everyone.
What I learned about it is I think it's, it's a nice way to start your morning, and it feels good to know that you're helping students start their day.
So this is my second year at ClearView, and I just absolutely love it here. Everyone makes you feel part of something bigger than just what you're doing, right? It's like, coming in, I just really felt like already part of the team the minute that I got here. I feel like with teachers is the same as with kids. If we feel like we are belonging and we are part of something bigger, that then we can all work together to create something great for the children.
In terms of just special education as a whole, just having opportunities for them to be a part of what's going on in their group, I think is key. You know, like, our, you know, main goal of special education is to have that least restrictive environment. So as much as we can keep them in their classroom and keep them with their peers is going to ultimately be better for them.
We knew that with our oldest, who's now in eighth grade, that if we had any interest in trying the Spanish immersion program, we would have to obviously start when she was in kindergarten. And they just really enjoyed the program. They've been able to blossom, and we really appreciated the sense of community that we found at ClearView. It was really been nice, too, as our kids have moved up now into middle school, it's been nice that they kind of have, as they follow with that immersion cohort, they kind of have that little built-in support system, but then to see them branch out and connect with other kids as well, too, from the other schools as they move into a larger school. It's just been a really great aspect of being able to keep some of their similar friends from their cohort, but then expand that friend group as well.
I would say that ClearView community, some people say it is a small community, but having a small community is sometimes more beneficial. You get to know everybody, and everybody can get to know you. That means that if you want to do something or you want to collaborate with another teacher, we can do that, because we didn't know anything at the beginning, but now we know more, because we have more friends, we have more community that is around us in ClearView that can help us.
One of the gifts of the Spanish immersion program is the ability to form a bridge and make connections with new cultures and people of diverse backgrounds. And we see that our students have the opportunity to use the program, to give them additional opportunities to serve the community, to visit new places, and to connect.
¿Qué te pareció el programa? ¿Cómo ha sentido que te ha ayudado el programa para aprender español?
Es muy bueno porque hay muchos libros de español ahí, como estamos en la biblioteca ahora. Y nosotros escribimos, escriben mucho. No solo estaban, estamos hablando y leyendo. Hay muchas formas que pueden hablar español y aprender español.
So as our program has continued to grow, we see all of the students working on just the normal grade-level things, but in Spanish. And it's just amazing to watch how their brains are capable of not only learning the grade-level material, but also utilizing Spanish as the ways to understand what they're learning in the classroom.
One of the really exciting things about building a maker space like this is that idea of students getting actual, hands-on experiences, especially when it comes to things like STEM. A lot of our kids right now, we've got our devices, but that's only one piece. It's not just all, all digital. We want those kids, you know, diving into things, building things, getting that engineering piece in there. So like I mentioned, like, some big, grandiose ideas to really push that idea of academic excellence and how we can really enhance what we're already doing at ClearView and in the district.
We're going to make it a great day and...
Go Cougars! Yay.
All right. We're going to move on to the ClearView pledge and then the mindful breathing. Okay, so we really are focusing on the two main pillars of belonging and academic excellence, although of course we're, you know, promoting collaboration and safety as well. But our continuous improvement plan, two of the strategic initiatives we've decided to continue on with from last year are the positive climate and culture, fostering safe and welcoming school climate, where students and families experience a sense of belonging, and then also the family and community engagement to strengthen and expand family engagement and partnerships to support student success and increase positive climate and culture. So we had a back-to-school barbecue in September. We had 150 people attend that. In trimester two, we're trying for a big event for families each trimester, so we did the book Bingo with the One District One Book, and we'll do a STEAM family event in April. You'll see the, that's the barbecue and the book Bingo down below. And we have some indicators from our, our plan that show that we are really living into the positive behavior intervention supports. Eighty-two percent of our teachers feel supported strongly with student behaviors and moving that in a positive direction. And then we also want our teachers and our staff to feel a part of our community, and eighty-seven percent have said that that's been a positive experience for them this year. Below, you see one of our teachers, our music teacher, was in the Waitresses' performance at the Paramount. And so these were, this was a group of us that all decided to go see her. She's also going to be in the Mary Poppins Paramount presentation in the, in the spring. So up above, you'll see our cougar cubs. This is kind of like the orange frog. Only one of our teachers actually knitted three baby cougars, and then we dressed them in orange, and we give these out each week, circulating among staff for appreciation of their efforts at our school. We also like to celebrate staff, and we see a lot of ways in which the students actually are appreciative of their teachers. Professora Susana was nominated by the Light FM Radio by a student, and she won that award. You see her surprised there. The kids honored the veterans on the Veterans Day. We had one of our cafeteria supervisors was a St. Cloud State University student. He's from Japan. This is Masa. And so he left us after a semester so he could do his student teaching experience, but the kids loved him so much, they wanted to make a big thank you poster for him. So they did that. We have a rockin' into try two, and we're going to surf into trimester three. And then, of course, we, we have various bingo events. That was holiday bingo as well. And then, of course, there's the focus on the instruction that produces positive outcomes. So that's our third main strategic initiative in our, in our SIP, in which teachers will collaborate using the adopted curriculum and data, along with reflection, to increase, increase student achievement and learning. So we had a new math program last year, the iReady Math Program. That's been going quite well. And this year, we have the new science program based on next-generation science standards and hands-on, student-centered science. And then for literacy, we've really focused in on the equity piece as well with the Spanish immersion, because we now have phonics in K-2 for English and Spanish. One of the things that really secures and allows is native Spanish families or heritage families that have Spanish in the home have the opportunity for their children to learn as much English as they would Spanish. And you're going to see, too, how just the dual-language environment really promotes that kind of high achievement and, and language acquisition. So we can ask ourselves why by literacy or why learning other languages. And I don't know if most people know, but the research shows that we naturally acquire languages at a fluent level up until about the age of 12. And then after that, we lose that ability, and we kind of have to learn it, as many of us did in, in middle school and high school, in a more structured way. So many of our students, as you saw one in the video, like, he learned all of his Spanish through the school program, and he's got native fluency. But in addition to that, the brain stimulation really helps students regulate themselves. It focuses their attention and also helps them move away from the emotional center and into the intellectual center so that they can manage their behavior better. It does prevent Alzheimer's. There's been studies to show that people who learn second languages and third languages do better there. Not to mention, as one of our teachers said in the, the video, the effect of communication. So it's not just about learning a language, it's about learning a culture and different ways of doing things. So it increases sort of your communication abilities, your empathy, and also your social And then when we talk about the science of reading, a lot of times, people will see just one half of, of this sort of arching cross-linguistic transfer. The studies all show that students who have a foundation in a home language, whether it's English or Spanish, they can use that connection of that language to access that second language. And so the language comprehension and word recognition of, of one language can actually create skilled readers in the second language through that cross-linguistic transfer. An example would be that ninety-two percent of the sounds in Spanish are actually produced in the English language as well. That's mostly the consonants. The vowels are a different story. But that cross-linguistic transfer really has demonstrated, particularly among our multilingual learners, that their acquisition of English skyrockets when they're placed into a program. That's a dual-language immersion. We also talk about academic excellence and innovation. And so we've taken one of our old computer labs, thanks to the carpenters, who were able to deconstruct the tables and rebuild them into a space where we can turn it into a maker space and do more engineering activities. You also saw Kyle Turk, who is an ed technologist, and he, he did some AI training with our teachers. There are certain programs that allow elementary students to experience AI with guardrails that are up, so they're not open to the World Wide Web, but that helps train them for their futures. Our fifth grade, a couple of fifth grade teachers are, are trained in the modern classroom. That's an approach to doing math, where there are peer coaching and teacher coaching opportunities, as well as self-paced mastery. And then I've been doing a lot of instructional leadership on how we can bring the language more actively alive with students, particularly in their writing and in their oral production. And by using kind of iPads and our Seesaw platform, the kids can record themselves and then listen to one another and re-listen to themselves speaking to, to improve their overall performance. All of these initiatives are really focused on student-centered instruction and how we place the kids at the center of their learning. So this all comes with systems connections to what we call collective efficacy. That means we, as a team, are all working together to move in the same direction. And our continuous improvement plan, while we had the instructional leadership team really help develop that with positive culture and quality instruction, the teacher goals have really focused this year on the positive relationships and the culture of thinking and learning, so that the goals of the teachers are in parallel with what the instructional leadership team has connected our SIP to the strategic initiatives. And then we had school committees, our, were revived this year. We had opportunity to have school committees again. And so when our instructional leadership team chose those committees, they chose those committees to align with the continuous improvement plan. So one committee is for positive behavior intervention. That's for the positive climate and culture. We have a family engagement committee that's planning those family events and grade-level events as well. We have an academic celebration committee that is, we have a Lexia Wall of Fame, where the kids get their pictures taken when they level up in their reading. And then we have a sunshine and wellness committee that's really doing wraparound to make sure that the staff and teachers are feeling as, as sort of welcome and belonging as, as we're making the families and the kids. So I appreciate that. Muchas gracias, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments at all? Scott, go ahead.
I'm really impressed with your Spanish immersion program. In fact, it looks like it's been so good that Westwood decided to adopt it. What's it been like working with, with Westwood and your schools and coordinating this program?
Yeah, I know that coming in, what's been really interesting is how we had, we didn't want to have all new teachers developing the Westwood program, and so there was staff that, you know, we had a staff member that was experienced that was shifted over to Westwood. And we're very open when we look at staffing, at how teachers might be able to be shared, to share best practices. We also had, the immersion coordinator did a dual-language immersion workshop in August, where all the immersion teachers came together to talk about best practices in language acquisition. And we broke into the Chinese and the Spanish sort of cohorts to be able to talk about that to launch the school year. I think it was like a three-day, a three-day workshop. And then we also linked in Minnesota Department of Education to help us with some of that development as well.
Sounds good. I did notice that there was some declining enrollment from over the years. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the data, you know, new, like you, as this is my first year. I, I did see, obviously, declining enrollment that happened definitely with the pandemic, and it has kind of turned around and, and, you know, risen again. We hope that with the boundary changes, that will also help capture some, and relieve the pressure at some of the Tallahinn Oak Hill buildings that would be able to come into, to our building, to keep that stable and, and support the entire district overall.
The boundary changes, have they kicked in yet or no?
They would start next year, but we're anticipating and looking at what parts of that population would stabilize in ClearView as they graduate up. So families that are in that area obviously can, can come in, or they can choose to stay where they are. But over time, then, we'll see some stability in those numbers that would add to the ClearView population.
Okay. Thank you.
I love the video, as I always do, and I loved that, I know, he probably doesn't want to be called a little guy, but little fifth grader. And it's just neat to see students so engaged, and that's purposeful on your part, so thank you for that. I have two questions. What, first of all, what surprised you the most about ClearView and 742 since you're new-ish on this, on the scene?
Yeah, I, yeah, the, the community at ClearView has just got a really positive energy. The teachers are very committed to the philosophy of the program. They're very open and collaborative, and that is, that's just huge. I mean, to walk into a situation where you have that kind of energy from a team, they hold themselves to very high standards, they hold me to high standards, so I appreciate that. But I think that, I don't know if I would call it a surprise. I mean, I was overseas for 10 years. Previously, I was in the St. Louis Park School District in the high school, but I'm, I know their Spanish immersion program well, and I served for four years as a, as a head of school in a German immersion charter program, so.
Ja wohl.
Ja wohl, yeah. Das ist mein.
That's my heritage you're talking about?
Das ist mein Handysprache, so. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. German I learned when I was, I was over in Germany for a while, and then I was in Barcelona, Spain, too. So, but yeah, so I'm, I'm a big believer in, in what languages do for, you know, brain development, economic opportunity, and just cultural awareness and social intelligence. So, but yeah, it's been, it's been really lovely, being embraced by the community and included. And I will shout out Carissa Hopkins-Hull and Elizabeth Henin, our new videographer, because they were instrumental in, in making that video, which I think they did a beautiful job.
Yeah, they did a great job. Thank you for sharing that. What are you most looking forward to in trimester three?
Hmm, well, warming weather.
Come on, yes.
I, I think I'm looking for, I'm looking forward to, you know, coming to the conclusion of, of my first year and to really look and see, too, how the data that we've been looking at, the formative data and the interventions, and then the continued use of, we're using the FastBridge for seeing how students are growing. Last year, we did the language test stamp across all the grade levels, because we wanted to have a baseline. But now, just because we don't want to overtest kids, we're going to do second and fourth grade. So I'm really interested in seeing, you know, I'm, I'm a big, you know, I like to look both at longitudinal data, and I also like to look at cohort data.
Yeah.
Because I think you can have different groups of kids that go through, so you want to kind of see how they evolve as a group, but then you also want to keep some of that longitudinal data for, one of the things we see is, in K-2, their scores are a bit lower, because they're grappling with two languages, but suddenly in like fourth and fifth grade, they pop. And they often go on then in middle and high school to do as, as well as or better than their monolingual. monolingual peers. So keeping an eye on, you know, the end of that first year and seeing how some of the initiatives in the second year of I Ready and other things sort of show in our data.
Yeah. Lastly, I was looking at your data deck and almost all students said they are very concerned. It was really great. It was like, I take charge of my learning, basically. Like, yeah, let's go. And so I think it was like 1% said disagree. That was just a mistake. It was 100%, we're going to say. The interesting thing about looking at this data for every school is that you start to see some trends. And this is, I think, for as many times as we've had schools present, I've asked about the students are kind to each other. We see that that's a little bit lower, the disagree and strongly disagrees about 25%. So can you speak to that and maybe what you think is going on in students' mind when they click that?
Yeah, we, this comes from Superintendent Putnam's initiative for her climate summit, which the data came out, I think, in 2324. But she has just asked all of the instructional leadership teams to circle back to that. And it was our last, I think it was the early out on just the 14th. We actually had the instructional leadership team design slides to talk about how are students kind to other students, how are students kind to teachers, how are we working on the positive behavior interventions? And the three prompts were like, what's going well, what needs like work, and then what ideas do you have to be able to contribute? So we've talked a little bit about revisiting some of the conscious discipline, revisiting some of the envoy strategies for helping regulate that and helping teachers have the strategies for being able to do that. And now our instructional leadership team is gathering that input from the entire staff community. That was the paraprofessionals and the teachers as well, to then see what initiatives do we want to take where we can find time to do like retrainings on things. Because sometimes when you have newer teachers, they didn't have as much conscious discipline or they didn't have as much. And so how do we sort of like recommit to those and then also retrain so that we can all work? And that's the big one too, I would say definitely, is helping kids like be kind to each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and you can go to the conscious discipline training and then all of a sudden you implement it and that's a whole other.
It's a whole other thing.
When you're in the classroom, for sure. So thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Next up, we have the MDE Review and Comment Summary presented by Amy Skeloud, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, members of the board. I'm not going to project because the review and comment summary is a four page and little tiny print, very wordy document from MDE. So it is attached in the board agenda if you'd like to look at it. But I'm really just going to kind of summarize why we're here, to discuss this and what the requirement is. So as part of any proposed construction project, whether that be a referendum or any sort of project, Minnesota statutes require that a review and comment be submitted to the Department of Education for review and approval, so that they can comment on the economic advisability of the project, whether that seems to be in the best interest of the district. And then in addition, state statute requires that that summary that we get back from the Department of Education be presented at a public meeting, which is why we are here tonight. So the district submitted that required documentation, which is a very lengthy document. It includes information on our existing facilities, the proposed projects, what are the identified needs or gaps in existing opportunities and facilities that we have that warrant the project, what are the financial budgets, what's the financing mechanism, so a whole bunch of information that gets submitted to the department. We did receive back a positive review and comment from MDE. And that's what the letter that you have attached to the board agenda is the response that we got back. And so that does indicate that MDE feels that both questions one and two are in the long term best interests of the district. Statute also requires that the review and comment summary we get back includes any comments that the public has made directly to MDE up until the date of the review and comment submittal back, which was February 12th. And as of that date, MDE had received no public comments on our proposed projects. I will also add that there is a requirement to publish that same MDE two page summary in our official newspaper, and that was completed last week as well. So if there's any questions on the review and comment process or anything, I can certainly answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, last information item tonight, we have the American Indian Education Update. Welcome, we have Aion Omar, Equity Services Director, Kip Perkins, Coordinator of American Education, and Heather Broda, American Indian Education Cultural Liaison. Glad to have you guys.
All right, good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, and members of the school board. As required by MDE statute, districts or schools that report to have a minimum of 20 American Indian students on the October 1st MARS reporting deadline are eligible to receive funding for the American Indian Education Program. Additionally, such districts must either have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee or be working collaboratively with Office of American Indian Ed to Form 1. Fortunately for us, we have a robust programming that is supported by a committed group of NAIPAC parents. This evening, Kip Perkins, our American Indian Education Programs Coordinator, Heather Broda, American Indian Education Cultural Liaison, and I will provide an update on our American Indian education programming and activities. Kip and Heather play a key role in affirming the unique cultural identity and history of our American Indian students and their families, ensuring that our staff are equipped with the resources and skills to support these students in reaching their full potential through meaningful, equitable, and culturally relevant educational experiences. So we'll go ahead and get started. As mentioned, our program collaborates with NAIPAC, previously APAC, and I'll give you the context of that in a little bit here, designs programming and instructional activities that affirm the cultural identity of American Indian students and their families.
Currently, we have 275 students in our school district that identify as Native American. Of that 275, 56% are at the elementary level and 44 at the secondary level. For our secondary students, we work with building leaders to provide a space for our native students to smudge. We also went on a couple college centered field trips, which I'll talk a little bit about later in another slide. Another thing we do is we hold regular beating groups for our secondary, high school level students. And then at our elementary level, I'll invite Heather to share a little bit about what she's been doing at the elementary level.
And just to add a little bit to Kip's point here, we have ILPs. We continue in creating ILPs for all of our American Indian students that has a cultural identity goal.
Bonjour, everybody. That's hello in Ojibwe. I'm new to the school district and to St. Cloud. I moved here from Leech Lake Reservation, which is my home, and I've been here since October, so I'm very new. And so the programming is also very new, as there was only one person and a couple consultants here and there throughout the history here. And so what I've been doing is working with elementary students by hosting lunch meetings with the students, and then we'll do like a cultural activity while we're eating lunch or just visit and get to know each other. One of the things I discovered, a lot of them didn't know each other or that each other were Native American. We come in all shades. So sometimes you don't know whether somebody is Native American or not. And so one of the greatest experiences I've had with students is there was a group of three young boys, third grade boys, all in the same class, all looked different. And once they realized they were all Native American and they got to come have lunch with me, they put their arms around each other in the cafeteria and said, we're the native boys, we're the native boys. And I just felt that that was really affirming for all of them to know that each other were in the class together. Another one of the students, he struggled with friendship and with attendance at school. And since I've been working with him, he mentioned to me during lunch one day, I haven't missed a day of school this week. So we high fived. So that's just an example of what, you know, having somebody present in the school that they identify with, that's what matters to these kids. And so we're going to be doing more reading groups and with some puppets and things, we have all kinds of things available, and I'm just finding things as I go along. And then what else? And then just one-on-one meetings with students if they want here for support for parents. We've had a lot of parents reach out, sharing information, also asking for help with IEP meetings and with conferences even, where we have some reaching out to us. So that's, and I'm new, there's lots of ideas, there's, you know, it's just getting to know everybody, all the schools, because I'm spread out through all the elementary schools, so it doesn't give a lot of time and focus to one school with, Tlahehnoke is our highest population right now, so. It's nice to meet you all. Me guich.
All right, like I mentioned earlier, we went on a couple field trips. The first field trip was to the U of M. They host an annual event where they highlight their Indian net program, highlighting their various resources that they offer, that they can offer native students. One cool thing they did was they talked about the various careers you can pursue if you take a Native Studies major. And I thought that was really cool. They had like so many jobs or careers up there that I never even thought of before, but that was cool. Our second trip was to the Minnesota History Center in St. Paul. That's an annual Native American college fair. It's a nationwide college fair. And there they just, the students get to have conversations with representatives from different schools throughout the nation.
And then a few things we're hoping to do upcoming is host financial aid assistance specific to our American Indian students, including Minnesota Indian Scholarship, tribal scholarships, and American Indian Tuition Waiver Schools. We had the 2024 Community Graduation Honoring in collaboration with the city of St. Cloud for the first time. We continue to collaborate with St. Cloud State, SCTCC, St. John, St. Ben's, as well as Sartell St. Stevens, with the ultimate goal being creating a community here for American Indian students since the numbers are so low. We were hosted by Mayor David Kleis. As of last year, 60% of our American Indian students graduated. We continue to aspire for 100%. We have 23 student seniors this year in the graduating class. Now I'll highlight the Indigenous Peoples' Day, at least one hour of instructions dedicated to learning about the indigenous people of this land. We collaborate with our Director of Secondary Education and also Elementary Education in ensuring that on this day, teachers have a variety of activities, instruction material to use to ensure that we are able to provide an hour of instruction. We do have our 2023 video that we created that we continue to show, looking to update that here next year, but I have that for those of you who are newer to the board.
Make this one simple change when filling out your FAFSA.
Tell I research FAFSA a lot.
Indigenous Peoples' Day requires a program related to our American Indian Education Program. Educating all students about indigenous heritage creates a more historically aware society, so we may do better together. Honoring indigenous people partnered with St. Cloud to support and prayer cleanup at Kennedy. American heritage teaches us the reciprocal relationship between humans and nature, calling each of us to respect and care for the environment. This day reminds us of the responsibilities we hold to each other. Communities are an integral part of who we are.
For me, being in business and working in education means fostering cultural understanding and empowering future generations by bridging the gap between knowledge. It also means ensuring educators have the tools they need to provide inclusive and culturally responsive learning environments. I strive to instill pride in indigenous identities of our students, ask cultural respect to defend the educational landscape.
Bonjour, I'm Jean-Jacques Daud, condition acas, ma qua indodum, Fond du Lac and Ojibwe. My family is from Bad River, Fond du Lac, Bad Cliff Indian Reservations. I just did an introduction in Ojibwe. In Ojibwe, my name is Jean-Jacques Daud, means blue sky woman. So my name is Teresa Zebarth-Marz, and we're celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. Being indigenous to me means to having good thoughts and to exist with others and nature in a respectful way. My mom taught me to do something good with each day, and I can't think of a better way to do good than to serve children and inspire learning. I'm happy to be a part of making an educational difference for native students and implementing American Indian education for all here at District 742. This Day of Recognition was proclaimed in October 2021 by the Minnesota State Governor, Tim Walz. As we celebrate this day here at ISD 742, let's embrace this opportunity to acknowledge that Indigenous Peoples' Day serves as an important time to reflect on the experiences of indigenous peoples and explore ways to provide greater access and opportunity for native people.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Otmer, and I'm a counselor at Apollo High School. I am also a member of the Lakutere Band of Ojibwe in Wisconsin. Growing up, my dad talked to me often about our Native American history, its values, traditions, and beliefs, including the importance of keeping our heritage alive through recognition and education. Indigenous Peoples' Day is important to me because it does just that. It recognizes and celebrates the amazing culture and history that I feel so fortunate to be a part of. And as an educator, I feel proud that I can honor my dad by passing on the lessons and values he once taught me to all of the students that I work with.
Last year, we hosted a powwow in collaboration with St. Cloud State, St. Cloud Technical College, St. John, St. Ben's, and the Sartell School District. This year, it was hosted by St. Cloud Tech, but it was housed at our Apollo Building. And we are in talks to have another powwow. And it usually starts in the fall, or in the fall, in November. This year, this powwow, sorry, I just got excited. It was, for me, it was our biggest turnout ever for as far as spectators. So that was cool because we had two competing powwows, one in the cities and one in Duluth, which have high. high Native populations. So we did pretty well with that. All right. And then this one, Native Studies Summer Workshop for Educators, is a yearly summerly event hosted by St. Cloud State. This year, we sent seven school employees up to the Boys' Fort, Boys' Fort Reservation. That's an Ojibwe community. And we learn about both Dakota and Ojibwe. And the Dakota culture is being taught by Darlene St. Clair from St. Cloud State. She does a really good job at that. And we plan to go again this year. But this year, they're going to have two dates. And one will be at Shakopee, and the other one is yet to be determined. All right. And then one, one more thing is our Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference. This year, it's being held in Shakopee again. They get all the cool things. It's a two day conference and where they have breakout sessions for educators to teach them about various things about Native culture, best practices to work with Native students. And there's a whole list of different breakout sessions that are led by some really smart people. And it's a really good conference. And I encourage everybody to go.
And we continue our virtual professional development with Dr. Anton Troyer, who did an amazing PD for district-wide PD. We're able to record his presentation and make it available and accessible to our teachers for relicenser. Per MDE requirement, now American Indian Education Culture and History is a required licenser outside of cultural competency. So we make that available to all our teachers via Schoology and via professional learning platform. Um, oh, sorry. Tidbit. Tony Troyer, Anton Troyer, he's from where I'm from. But we just watched Star Wars in Ojibwe, and he's one of the voice actors for that. Just a little tidbit. So if you have Disney Plus, you have to select it, go to the extras, and it's in Navajo and Ojibwe. And there's English subtitles, so you'll know what's happening. Because I don't know enough Ojibwe to know what was happening. So anyways, cultural events that we have collaborated with different schools are Joe Jordan is an Ojibwe drummer singer. And so he's come with his drum to our affinity space. He came to Tla'hi for Cultural Night. And those boys that I have lunch with all want to make a hand drum. One of them got to meet Joe. And so hopefully, we're going to be hosting that coming up. And then the Red Tree Drum Group will be performing at all the graduations for both Apollo Tech and then also McKinley. And then South Junior High had a storyteller, Native American storyteller, Fern Renville. She's Dakota Seneca. And then we actually, our NAPAC Committee is hosting an Ojibwe storyteller, Devery Fairbanks, on Saturday. And so that's open to our NAPAC families and students. And then we also have scheduled, I don't know if you saw Teresa, what she was wearing in the video, she was wearing a ribbon skirt. So we're hosting on March 1st and 2nd, a ribbon skirt and ribbon shirt making for our families to come. And what else? I think Martha Redbone is coming to one of the schools. She's an Afro-Indigenous artist, music artist. She's amazing. She's also performing at the Paramount. What else? I thought there was one other thing I wanted to mention. But as of right now, that's what we've, we've done so far. Oh, the second grade, all second grade sections from Tla'hi, we planned a field trip to the Malaks Indian Museum in collaboration with the teachers. And so three sections are three different days, all the sections will go attend.
All right. One more, another thing that we have on the horizon is the Construct Tomorrow Career Fair. And the idea behind this career fair is to bring awareness to high school students about the amazing post-secondary opportunities in the construction and building trade industries. And this year, we planned to go last year, but it just came up too fast. It was, it was, the closest one was held in Duluth. But this year, they're coming to St. Cloud in April at the Convention Center. So we are looking into taking some students to that this year.
Thank you. Okay, that was impressive. Great stuff. Anybody have any questions at all? Scott? Okay.
You said it's NPAC, not APAC. What happened?
So our NAPAC, just on a personal note, most people that I know prefer Native American over American Indian. And so the parent committee voted to change the name for that reason. It's just more inclusive as far as tribal, because every tribe would prefer to be called what we are, which is Anishinaabe. But we say Ojibwe. And so it's just, it's just a preference. And so a lot of school parent advisory committees have voted to change to NPAC instead of APAC. So that's where that came from.
Thank you. How do you find the time for the cultural stuff like, like beating or, I mean, the days are so packed already?
Yeah, we try to do them during their eagle time and tiger time, things like that. They're really quick sessions. So we have to be consistent about it so that they don't lose interest in their projects they're working on.
And they take them home and finish them. There was a picture of a hat that a student started beating. And he brought it today to our group and he completed it. So, yeah.
There it is.
Yep, that one. So he beat the brim all the way around.
Are powwow and Indigenous Days the same thing? Or are they different days? And when are they?
Indigenous Peoples' Day is usually the first week in October. And
It's a state holiday.
And then the powwow is just something we do to get together to try to build community.
No dates set on that yet?
No, not yet. But it's usually the first weekend in November.
Oh, okay. So nothing this spring?
No, I, I was on another powwow committee that was planning to do a powwow in the spring. But with all the various powwows throughout the state, they moved it to a winter powwow. And there, I was just consultant, kind of, kind of teaching, because nobody else had planned a powwow before. So I was kind of the one as a consultant, showing them how to do it and all that. But so, yeah, next year, we'll probably be more of a partner in that one. But this year, it was just more of like a trial, trial and error type thing.
I've been to a couple of them. They're a lot of fun. I just want to know when the next one is. Thank you.
There's one coming up. Leach Lake is hosting an urban powwow down in Minneapolis on March, I think it's 15th, if that's a Saturday, at the American Indian Center. Does anyone?
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so then we're going to move Kip Sting, right? And we're going to slide over into the discussion item, the Native American Parent Advisory Council Compliance, the NAPAC, again, presented by Kip Perkins, Coordinator of American Indian Education, and is Rosemary Whacker joining us. Welcome, Rosemary. Glad to have you too.
All right. Again, good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, and members of the school board. Districts that report an American Indian student population of 20 or more to the Minnesota Department are eligible for the American Indian Education Aid. The program uses the state-reported American Indian student count along with per pupil funding formula to estimate aid awards. MDE requires clear collaboration between the district and APAC, now NAPAC, each spring to ensure annual compliance, also referred to as the vote of concurrence or non-concurrence. Annual compliance serves as a mid-year reflection for the committee and has a specific requirement under state statutes. I would like to introduce Rosemary Whacker, whom you know from last year, and our NAPAC chair, to provide contacts behind the rationale to transition from APAC, which you kind of already know now, to NAPAC and this year's vote and resolution.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Hello. My name is Rosemary Whacker. I have been in the St. Cloud area for about two years now, involved with the Equity Services Team with ION and KIP. Lots to learn. Minnesota is still very hot. My, I'm a Newpak Eskimo from Alaska on the Bering Straits region, 36 miles down the coast, and my Newpak name is Asixik. I have a little man who goes to Clearview, so it was nice to see the presentation, who is also in the Spanish immersion program. It's cute to see how he shares his words with me and family. He gets it confused sometimes. He tells me it's English when he's actually speaking Spanish. And he has shared with me that the school does breathing techniques each morning. So, and then my 21-year-old, so their age difference is very far apart, 15, 16 years apart. So the NAPAC Committee this year transitioned from APAC, which was the American Parent Advisory Committee, in transition to NAPAC, the Native American Parent Advisory Committee at the MIEA Conference. Last year, we did see other school districts within the state transitioning to a new title as well. We, as a committee, our parents did vote non-concurrence with the school district with recommendations to continue what was submitted last year. I have big shoes to fill. So Lacey's not here, and we've got a great team. So Kip's doing amazing. Heather's been a great asset. And it's great to hear that our students are proud and happy to know that they have more of our own Native people and students in their school districts. We do also allow children at our NAPAC meetings. Last year, my son, unfortunately, was kind of a sole survivor, and ION was there and KIP to keep him entertained. This school year, he was a little hesitant, but we have had great turnout. So he is looking forward to meeting new kids of our Native culture there as well. Heather has met with him at Clearview a couple of times, and he has come home very proud to see Heather as well. So it's great to hear. Yeah. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Scott?
I think last year, there was quite a lengthy thing written to the state of Minnesota. You spent a lot of time on it, if I remember right. And this year, we're maintaining the same program, then? Or what are we doing?
So the recommendations were continued from last year. The parent committee has not felt like our numbers have moved up enough for us to go with a concurrent in this area. So the recommendation was to continue what was submitted, a majority of everything that was sent last year.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that you're having great turnout. So that's fantastic.
It is amazing. And the kids seem to like it, too. So they get to connect with each other, which is nice. So one thing I would like to comment, though, so my daughter grew up in Alaska. At a young age, she was very proud to say she was a Newpak Eskimo. I shared with Kip and Heather at our last meeting. With all this cold, we say, my son also knows some of Newpak words that we use at home. And when we were going into the school, I'm like, oh, it's so ala pa, meaning it's so cold. And he's like, oh, I'm not cold. And I'm like, oh, is that because you're a Newpak Eskimo? And he was like, no, I'm not. So seeing just a little different, I think, because my daughter grew up with our strong Native culture in Alaska, where our community is very strong with our Native people, made me realize that I should maybe address that a little bit more with my son, being down here in the Lower 48 and not having such a broad community of our tradition, brought a lot of awareness to me. So I will be embracing that a Newpak Eskimo word with my son. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then we have another discussion item. We have the Proposed Revised Board Policy 525, Violence Prevention. This is a second reading presented by Shannon Avison, Assistant Superintendent of E-12 Educational Services.
Good evening, everyone. We did go through both policies in detail last week, or last board meeting, and we have not recommended any changes to the policies that we reviewed last week. I will note, though, however, we did have a discussion about creating some guidance around the implementation planning of the Violence Prevention 525. And so that's another piece that I am working on. But at this time, there is no adjustments to the board policies that we reviewed at the last board meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions since then? And Shannon is presenting another second reading, its Proposed Revised Board Policy 535. This is our service animals in schools.
And much like this last one, again, we went through it in detail last week, and there were no suggested changes. And so we will just be moving forward with the request to propose that for the third and final read.
Anybody? Scott?
I thought that there was something about facility animals versus service animals. Like, the lady brought in a dog that was a facility animal that she kept with her versus service animals that go with the client?
Yeah, I think when we were talking about that, we clarified that we, that the therapy dogs, the those that they were sharing with us last week, those are not a part of this policy. So this is specific to those service animals. And so this policy, we would not add anything about the therapy dogs or the facility dogs to this particular policy.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Shannon. Then moving on to an action item, just one action item tonight. We have a Spring Golf Co-op presented by Dr. Jason Harris, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. And welcome back, Apollo Activities Director Carl Heine.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, board members. The administration's looking for approval for a Spring Crush Co-op. And we have Activities Director Heine here to kind of explain how the co-op came about.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. So I just want to kind of lay the groundwork again here when we talk about co-ops and the difference between creating a new crush co-op or expanding a crush co-op. So anytime that we form co-ops, or a school would reach out to us, like in this case, and would want to join our co-op, with the high school, you got to go through a formal process of dissolving a current co-op, adding all member schools back in, and reforming a new co-op. So the Crush Golf Co-op has been in existence for several years. Actually, Apollo and Tech competed together in a co-op prior to forming as a crush four years ago. So the Tech Apollo merger has been in place for years, and both programs are staying consistent with numbers. Last year, we finished with about 24 girls and about just under 30 boys. And, you know, lose a few to graduation, hopefully gain a few more in the seventh graders that join in because it is a 712 sport. So this is just kind of an addition to an existing co-op, not as elaborate as recreating a new crush co-op. But we are looking for the approval. We've been approached by two schools, primarily St. Cloud Christian School, who they've seen a decline in their numbers and aren't carrying a golf program this year for their spring. And so they're asking us to take on their golfers. Currently, they have three that are interested, but know that if we were to accept them, we would probably see a few more. But in that single-digit range, would be adding. We've also been approached on the boy side by Holding Ford to add one additional golfer to our to our boys' golf team. That individual is already a member of our Crush Boys Hockey Co-op. That includes Holding Ford as well. So it would be adding a student that already exists within our co-ops to that, to that piece.
Thank you for that explanation. Anybody have any questions at all? Okay. So this is an action item, and administration is recommending we approve the new Spring Golf Co-op. Can I get a motion for that? Thanks for working that out. That was a motion by Scott and a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call vote?
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Diana Fenton?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Scott Andreessen?
Yes.
Carl, thanks for sliding back over here to join us. Is the game over?
It's just getting going. It was 10:10 when I peeked back here a little while ago. So it's right in the prime right now.
All right. Awesome. Thanks for coming back. Okay. Just a few items left we have tonight. We have, moving on to our reports. First up, we have the Superintendent's Report presented by Dr. Lori Putnam, our superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Haas, members of the board, cabinet, and the few of you who have stuck it out with us in the audience. Thank you so much. Since I am spending the majority of my time right now working on the referendum, that is what I'm going to speak about this evening. We have spent a significant portion of most days reaching out to our community, talking not only to internal district staff, but to family groups, to civic organizations, to higher education institutions, truly anybody who will let us talk with them. And when I say we, Principal Scallard and I have been doing the presentation, though Gary Genji and Tammy Deland have supported us, and I think they've been with us every presentation. And so they, too, are part of our team and grateful for that. We are doing about 85, I think, at last count, it was at 85 presentations, and we're grateful for that opportunity because we are so committed to making sure that everybody knows the importance of this effort. Question one, of course, is focused on safety and learning updates at Apollo High School, and that must pass before question two can be considered. Question two was not initially on our radar, but was, our advisory committee asked us to, they identified the need in the community, and we concur that it would be helpful in our school district for our students and staff and community. So question two is to build an indoor multipurpose athletic center that would be built on the Apollo grounds, but it would be open to all 742 students, our local youth organizations, and the community. And so we are, we are also pleased to offer that to our community. And as I said, question one must pass because that really focuses on safety and learning and for question two to be considered. And early voting starts this Friday here at the district office. Early voting can happen from 7:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. And people need to be registered. If they're not currently registered, they need to be registered by May 15th. So we certainly encourage folks to get that done. And then the early voting will continue until April 8, which is, of course, the general election. But, sorry, on the 7th, thank you. Yep. So it's good until April, through the 7th, until April 8. And then all of our polling locations will be open because we certainly want every person in our community to have free access to their citizenship, to their citizenhood, and to be able to exercise that right to vote without barrier. And so really, really grateful for the board's support in that area. And so we certainly ask everybody in our community to learn more at our, there's a referendum website, and to get out and vote on or before April 8.
Thank you. Then we have the Board of Education Standing Committee Reports. I believe we just have one. Achievement, Integration, and Equity Committee Chair Diana Fenton.
Superintendent Putnam, Chair Haas, the Achievement, Integration, and Equity Committee meeting met this morning, and the information that was presented was on the American Indian Education Program, which was presented tonight at the board. And we discussed in further detail what the non-concurrents would look like and the recommendation for the board to meet the next reporting.
Do we, anybody else have a committee? Okay. I didn't think so. And then we have Future Agenda items, March 12, 2025. Board of Board meeting topics will include Clearview Fields Partnership, the annual staffing timelines, Say Something Presentation, school updates, and of course, some policy readings. At this time, does any board member want to suggest a future agenda item? This is impressive. I am looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's board meeting. I have a motion by Natalie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. My head just turns this way, so.
I don't even have a chance.
And a second by Diana. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. It is 7:48 PM. Thank you for watching. We will be back March 12.